All right, I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education Meeting to Order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we do have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Tonight, we remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for Edward J. Mishka, who worked in the Lancaster Central School District for forty-six years, beginning in nineteen sixty-seven. Mr. Mishka was a business teacher for twelve years, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services for twenty-eight years, and Superintendent of Schools for six years. Mr. Mishka retired in two thousand thirteen and passed away on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. All right, on to four point oh presentations. We've got our CDEP, our Comprehensive District Educational Plan. We've got John Armstrong, Aaron Gannon, Andrew Kufel, Andrew Crasman, Karen Marchioli, and Michelle Ziegler.
We'll go ahead and get started. Smiling faces here. Good evening, Board members, Lancaster community members. So last spring, spring of twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-two, we were here with a cadre of the Core Team Committee presenting on the details of the the CDEP, the Comprehensive District Education Plan, including the goals that were established over the course of many years and coming out of the pandemic, the underlying themes, the infrastructure to support the attainment of those goals, mainly the committee work and the plan of action template that we were to use. And then we also discussed the data that we used to arrive at the goals as a as a collective district K-12 team, the data being some of our state-level data, some of our formative and summative assessment data, some of our survey results from the various constituency groups, focus groups, core team. But that's not what today is. We'll review a little bit of that. What we're really, really going to talk about is the progress made towards the attainment of those goals, including the development of committees and the corresponding plans of action. You may recall that we distributed a hard copy of that, and then many of you have it or lives in a couple of different places. What's important here to notice is that this represents the overall Comprehensive District Education Plan. And more importantly, everything within the plan is connected, okay? The bottom part represents the underlying themes. Those themes are are the roots of the tree, so to speak, that support the attainment of the goals, and the attainment of the goals by our students, right? We're, as an administrative team and our teachers, and we'll talk a little bit about the the committees, but we're here to support our students attain these goals. The goals are the branches, and you'll see that they're all connected, some more directly than others, okay? But they're all connected in some capacity, directly or indirectly. And as we go through the plan of actions, or plans of action for each of the goals, that'll be more apparent. And this is just kind of refreshing on where we were. There are five underlying themes. Those are the roots of the tree. Those underlying themes are college, career, and civic readiness. That's where we're looking to push all of our students. When they leave Lancaster, it's beyond graduation, like we've said in the past, to preparation. Where are they going to college? Where, which career path are they choosing? And how are we going to support them in that attainment? Curriculum instruction assessment, what we kind of, what we do as the curriculum instruction department, and philosophically how we approach that to support the goal attainment, our professional learning communities, social and emotional learning, and then our culture, climate, and inclusivity. Those are the the roots of the tree, so to speak, when you look at it graphically, or as an infographic. And then the goals. We have MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, okay? That's making sure that our students, all of our students, get what they need when they need it in terms of interventions specific to their potential deficits, so they can continue to move K through twelve in a successful manner. Literacy, that's K three, and we're going to give some more detail here. Writing's a K-12 goal. Three through eight ELA, English Language Arts, that's specific to the New York State tests. Algebra I is a goal that touches above and below. It rests in eighth grade, the actual goal, and we'll talk more about that. But it it brings the math instruction below and above and kind of connects it specifically directly related to college career math, or col-, I'm sorry, college credit math. And you'll see that on the the tree itself, which is also directly related to college credit overall. And lastly, our science goal. And that's just a brief recap of the process that we presented last year, but this is where we're going to talk about today. A big thank you to all of our many stakeholders who are involved in the committee work. First and foremost, we have our teachers, our classroom teachers, our special education teachers, our academic intervention services teachers, our math and reading specialists, and our department-specific teachers who comprised our various committees to help establish the plans of actions you're going to hear about today. Our school counselors, our BOSI's IRT folks, those are experts that we utilize from BOSI's in various capacities, and one of them was in the the development of some of our plans to attain the goals. Student feedback. Some of the goals that we had, especially the upper-level goals you hear about, we used small focus group with our students, and we use some surveys to inform different aspects of it, whether it be underlying themes or the actual goals. And then lastly, our administrative team, our building principals, and our district office folks, who I'm joined by here tonight and I'll introduce momentarily. We've made quite a bit of progress, but those individuals have done a fantastic job of facilitating and co-facilitating the committee work. So what does that mean, right? That means bringing these collective individuals together, finding the time, researching some of these areas more deeply to make sure that the path that we're going down is the right path based on evidence, and 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 all the the I dotting and T crossing that goes along the way. So I'll introduce John Armstrong, Aaron Gannon, Andy Crasman. Michelle Ziegler is not here, and I will turn it over to Dr. Karen Marchioli. I did not skip you, I skipped you purposefully, I suppose.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, for being here tonight and continually supporting us as we work to make education the best it can be here in Lancaster. I also want to take a moment to thank our teachers and our building administrators who've been working on these committees with us, and for all the hard work that they've put in, both at the end of the school year and the groups that we have working over the summer. You may recall that back in the spring, I updated you a little bit on K-three literacy. And since then, we've done a great deal of work to support our goal of making sure that all of our students are reading at a developmentally appropriate level. Based on the research of the science of reading, which consists of several large-scale studies, we are moving from a balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach. This means that while we've always taught structured phonics, that we're going to be spending more time on that and doing it in a more systematic fashion and further up into the higher-grade levels. We know that in order to make change successful, we have to support our people. And the teachers have had several opportunities to take professional development at the end of last year. Some have taken some over this summer. There are opportunities available for them at the legendary Day of Learning when we opened school. We also have a group coming from the University of Florida to work with our teachers in October around a pilot program that we'll be doing around phonics. We also have an embedded literacy coach from BOSI's that will be working with our faculty and staff throughout the year, both professional development, curriculum writing, and coaching. I just mentioned that we'll be working with the University of Florida. They have an evidence-based program. That's a program that has been tested on real students in real classrooms throughout the country and in different demographics, and we will be piloting that program. The teachers and the administrators and I are really excited about this. In fact, when I put it out to the teachers and said, who would like to pilot this program? And I was expecting, you know, a group, a sampling. More than two-thirds of the teachers that I put that email out to put their hand up and said, me, please. And more than forty teachers this summer are doing work around that. So we have huge scale buy-in from the teachers who are excited about doing this work. Those teachers are putting together supplementary materials this summer. They are going through the manuals. They're doing things to help make it more teacher-friendly, so when teachers walk in the door, even before they get their formal training, they'll have supports in those buildings from their colleagues. We'll use the data that we collected this past year as our benchmark, and then continually measure as we work with our students to see how we're doing to pushing ourselves towards that goal of making sure that all of our students are reading at grade level. That also supports our next goal, which is three-eight literacy. And the three-eight literacy goal is built around the New York State assessments. And again, if you were here this past spring when I talked about these goals, you'll remember me saying that the New York State assessments do not measure reading proficiency. They measure a myriad of standards. But in order to be successful on those tests, you have to be able to read. You have to be able to comprehend. You have to be able to compare several different texts. You have to be able to synthesize and transfer that knowledge, and then you have to be able to write about it in a concise fashion on a computer. So there's a big difference between reading levels and the New York State assessments. However, as I said, these tests do measure quite a few of the New York State standards, which we obviously want our students to be proficient on. So as we look at that, we will use that, the three-eight assessments, as our metric. It also tells us how our students are doing compared to their peers across the state. That's important, too. We are good at what we do. We have some very, very intelligent, highly skilled people working here, but we want to make sure that we're doing just as well, if not better, than our colleagues in different school districts. So at the most basic level, we want our students to take those assessments. We also want to make sure that they're scoring at least with an overall proficiency score. And of course, we want to push as many students as possible to mastery. Here again, we see where these goals interconnect. The K-three literacy curriculum and instruction, with those changes, we predict that we'll see higher levels of proficiency as we go forward into these exams in William Street in the middle school. We're also strengthening our MTSS structures, which Mr. Armstrong and Mrs. Gannon are going to speak to you about, but those will better support our students in helping them work towards success. We have new curricular materials at the four-six building. We also have had extensive professional development here, and the teachers have spent a great deal of time in grade-level meetings, looking at data, looking at those materials, and determining what's working best for our kids. Meetings similar to that are happening at the middle school all the time as well. Again, continually looking at data and those instructional practices to make sure that we're doing the best for our students. As with the K-three literacy goal, our ELA teachers at the higher grades know that a strong literacy foundation is absolutely imperative for success in school and once you leave Lancaster. And so they keep working to push that to make sure students have what they need. The next goal, kind of connected to this, is writing. Writing is also extremely important to the success of our students, both in and out of school. For those of you who are parents, and you've sat there and watched your elementary children learn how to write, they can probably talk a blue streak, but the writing gets to be a little bit tougher. Speaking, communicating verbally is not the same as writing. It is not the same as putting pen to paper or fingers to keyboards. So that's something that we all, that we need to work on as schools, and we recognize that. Despite the importance of this, it's not something that teachers are taught when they go to college and when they go to university. It's not highly focused upon in their ELA methods classes as they go through their college years. Those professors tend to spend more time on the teaching of reading and of literature. So the district recognized that years ago, and we've worked with our writing committees to develop common language and a scope and sequence for writing instruction. But we've determined that we want to take it even further by breaking down how writing is taught to the most basic to the most advanced levels at every grade level and across the content areas. In order to do this, we have a group of teachers who are taking part in a book study called the Writing Revolution. And that Writing Revolution has different techniques that we had a select group of teachers working on this past year. And those teachers worked with some of our students who are struggling the most and some of our most gifted students, and they both saw, both groups saw extraordinary outcomes. So we're excited for that, and to work our way through that book study and then push some of those instructional techniques into our curriculum maps. We're also currently working on creating a partnership with Dr. John Strong. He is one of the few curriculum and instruction experts that focuses on writing. He's worked with teachers all over the country, and he's also recognized internationally for his work in the field, and we're fortunate enough that he's right here in Buffalo, so he's in our backyard. Specifically, our proposed partnership will be right here at William Street with the students here, and the teachers will receive professional development from him and his staff that will focus around those instructional techniques that he's been working on, and focus on both informational writing and responding to informational texts, specifically texts that are scientific and historical in nature. So to some of these three goals, these are the foundation of what students need. Mr. Crasman's going to talk to you about college credit, and he's going to talk to you about science, and he's going to talk to you about math. Can't be successful in any of those if you can't read and you can't write. So with our exemplary instruction, it's our goal to give students the ability to read and write and communicate in higher levels than what's expected in society. So when they walk out of our schools, they have the skill set to go out and be whatever they want to be in any career field. So again, I'd like to thank you all for your support of our students and our teachers who work with them. And I will pass it over to Mr. Crasman.
Thank you, Dr. Marchioli. Thank you, everyone. My name is Andy Crasman. I'm the Director of Secondary Education here in Lancaster. And I just wanted to start, very similar to how Dr. Marchioli started, just to say thank you to everyone who participated in all of our CDEP committee meetings in science and in math and in college credit, and taking that input and feedback in all of these meetings to try to make these goals reality. So to give you a quick recap on the two goals, we have two goals in science, one that revolves around physical science, one that revolves around life science. On the physical science end of things, we're looking to get a hundred percent of our students to take and complete successfully one course in one region's exam in the physical science. And then our goal on the life science side at the middle school is to have one hundred percent of a cohort earning proficiency in both the course and on the region's exam in living environment in eighth grade by two thousand twenty-seven. So we had four meetings over the course of the year with the Science Committee, and a couple of things came out of that. One of the things I'm going to talk about that extends beyond just science, but also into math and to college credit is that second bullet, Development Administration of a Student Engagement Survey. We worked in collaboration with a Student Engagement Committee of Students at Lancaster High School to develop a survey around student engagement in the classroom and some perceptions around math, science, and college credit. So that's a survey that was finished at the end of the spring that we will be administering to students this upcoming fall to gather some feedback and some information from them about some of their perceptions about math, science, and their plans for future college and careers. Oh, sorry, Don. Better? All right, thanks. Apparently I was out of camera view. So moving forward, though, I'm going to start physical science first. To get to a hundred percent of physical science, right now we're at about eighty-five percent. To move to one hundred percent in physical science, a big thing that was discussed in the committee was the development of science pathways. So traditionally, the pathway we have for science in students is living environment, earth science, chemistry, physics, and then some students participate in the Healthcare Academy programs or other academy programs, or some of the elective programs that we offer in the high school. One of the things that we are going to try this year, we have a pilot of giving students the opportunity in ninth grade to participate in regions, chemistry, and physics. This is a little bit outside the box, but students will have the prior knowledge of algebra coming in from the middle school and have also successfully completed living environment moving forward. What this does is that gives these students an opportunity, for example, if these, for the students who will be taking physics, if they're moving into Project Lead the Way, they will now have their basic core area of science done, completed, and fulfilled in physics before going into Principles of Engineering, Computer Integrated Manufacturing, Digital Electronics, and so on through the Project Lead the Way curriculum. For those students who might be looking to participate in the Healthcare Academy, having that chemistry regions credit under their belts, then leading it to maybe AP Chemistry, AP Physics, while taking Anatomy I and Anatomy II in the Healthcare Command, Healthcare Academy, it all connects together. So we're giving some students some different opportunities by opening up some different pathways, and we're going to try with that pilot with chemistry and students, chemistry and physics students in ninth grade next year. When it comes to the life science piece, we are adding two more sections of living environment to our middle school program for next year. So with the addition of these two programs, almost about seventy percent of our students in eighth grade will be participating and achieving regions' credit for life science and living environment before leaving Lancaster Middle School. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about math. Everybody loves math. I love math. Dr. Vallee loves math. He's got a big smile on his face. You can't see it on TV, but he's got a big smile on his face. So in thinking about Algebra I, we're going to increase the number of students of a given cohort earning proficiency in Algebra I to eighty-five percent by two thousand twenty-seven. The eighty-five percent comes from our senior profile data. Eighty-five percent of our students upon graduation from Lancaster are moving on to post-secondary studies and post-secondary education and taking on college/university coursework upon graduation from Lancaster. I talked a little bit about that Student Engagement Survey. This year, in seventh grade, we did a, we did a lab class, opposite for our students who weren't in our accelerated math program, but for everyone else, everyone at Lancaster Middle School this year in seventh grade got one and a half periods of math, all right, as part of their mathematics core instruction. And we did this to piggyback off of the reconfiguration from William Street two years ago, where those students, the sixth graders, received that same level of support. As we move forward into next year, next year, we'll be doing a pilot of eighth-grade students, where we'll be doing an Algebra With Lab for those students who kind of are on the fence. They could maybe take Algebra with a little bit of support, so we're going to provide that extra period of support every other day for those students to take Algebra I in eighth grade. All right, so we're very, very excited, as this is going to be a big piece moving into next year in putting this Algebra Lab in place for our eighth-grade students. Now, on the bookend of that, if we're going to be having more students who are going to be taking Algebra at the middle school, that means that we have to bookend it then with something else than at the high school. So if we have more students taking high school math in 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 eighth grade, we need to offer some more college credit and more college-level type experiences for our students, so the students can stay engaged through their eleventh and twelfth grade years before heading off to post-secondary education. So one of the things that we're taking a look at is we're exploring pathways for students to receive college credit. We have a variety of AP offerings already. We have calculus. We have statistics. We have college math for for dual enrollment credit. So we have a variety of different options, and we have a very, we have one pathway that clearly exists from Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus, to AP calculus. Now, we're going to be taking a look at other pathways in which we can create for students, maybe who don't want to go down the calculus path, but maybe do something along the line of statistics, or maybe do something along the line that we haven't even thought up yet, maybe something with data management or analytics or something like that, another pathway that we can give students college credit and feed them into college or university coursework. Last piece here, college credit, and again, that eighty-five percent comes from that senior profile data that I alluded to before. Our goal here is to have three dual enrollment and two advanced placement courses during their first four years at LHS. So one of the things that we did this year with the committee was we did an audit of our procedures when it came to dual enrollment. We work with a pretty large number of colleges and universities locally and throughout the state to provide college credit opportunities for our students, Bryant and Stranton, Hilbert, SUNY Erie, Buffalo State University, and RIT. Thank you for Project Lead the Way. I knew there was one more. So we have these different dual enrollment partnerships. So one of the things that we're taking a look at is can we streamline the processes for these courses so that the registration process looks the same, and so that the grading procedures can look the same, so that as students are participating in these courses, the process is streamlined for students and families, so that as more kids are participating in this coursework and participating in these programs, the process is a little bit more streamlined as we have more students take advantage of these opportunities. So we are consistently looking at our relationships with the different partners that we have, with SUNY Erie, Buffalo State, and so on, to see how can we streamline these processes and make these processes more coherent, so we can make it easier for families. In addition to that, one of the things that we're also looking to put together for, over the course of this upcoming school year this fall, is an AP Dual Enrollment Information Night. You know, we have over thirty different dual enrollment offerings that we offer at the high school. We have over twenty different advanced placement offerings that we offer at the high school. And we want to make sure that as students are getting ready to register for courses, people have a thorough understanding of what it is of all the different program pieces we offer, not just as far as academies go, but when it comes to college credit, AP, dual enrollment, and the like. So those are the steps that we are taking when it comes to college credit, math, and science. And to bring it home, I will turn it over to Mrs. Gannon and Mr. Armstrong to talk about MTSS.
I got you. Thanks, Andy. Let me know, Don, if I stray. Okay, I'll try not to. Good evening, folks. Thanks. It's a pleasure to talk about, you know, all the efforts. I mean, the folks that went before me to talk about the efforts to improve our structure, our instruction, and our curriculum and our assessment. And what's interesting about everything that that Karen and Andy and Andy presented already, you got to get into the line here, I got to make sure, is is part of multi-tiered systems of support. MTSS, at a, at the fundamental level, is how good instruction is in the classroom, and how organized our curriculum is, and how well we assess students. And then taking it the next step, multi-tiered systems of support, is the idea that if a child is struggling in the regular classroom or in any classroom, that we intervene early, often, and intensively to get that child back on track. We've, we, in the district, I may have mentioned this when we presented before, we've had, always had a good system of response intervention, which is kind of the forerunner of MTSS. Where MTSS takes the next step is, it focuses, also focuses, besides academic interventions, for example, to get a child reading better, or doing math better, for example, or write better, it adds a more, a more systematic approach of working when students have needs in for emotional support or to improve their behavior. And that's the basic difference. I mean, it's not, MTSS hasn't been, I don't think, formally adopted by the state, so I think in a way, we're a little bit ahead of the curve. But I know the state's coming out with some guidelines and some further training on it. But just to back up a little bit, to review, our goal is really to have all school, all of our seven schools ranked the very, very highest they can on a rubric that is pretty intensive. We did that, we started out to get a baseline this year. All our buildings rated themselves on how they were doing on their approaches to being organized with intervening for students. And and we have a lot of good things going. We followed up with a district assessment also not too long ago, and I think we may have been a little tougher graders at the district level, right? We may have said we've noticed some things on referrals and how our our different schools work towards this end. So I think our our rating, when we use the rubric, we are probably a little tougher, and we noticed some things that we can improve on. It's like, like why we're all here tonight, right? We're always working to improve, continuous improvement. Good organizations like Lancaster Schools and other organizations continually try to get better. We're going to get, we're okay on this, but we can always get better, and we will get better. So some other things that we've already done this year, besides getting a baseline of rubrics, both at the building level and district-wide, is we were able to share some data with the buildings about referrals, about about referrals, about, and let me just back up a second before I get, everyone, I'll try to get you all confused, and you can ask questions later, but MTSS is designed to do interventions, like I said before, early and often in the classroom, Academic Intervention Services, AIS, social-emotional support from psychologists and social workers, with the idea that we try to intervene early and often intensively, but ultimately, at some point, if those interventions don't work, then a child can, would probably most likely be referred for consideration for special education services. Not always, but almost always. So, I think Erin and I and my department is kind of in a unique position. We're supporting the general education curriculum and other interventions, but ultimately, those referrals get, will come to us for review and possibly for evaluation. So, we're kind of in a unique spot to kind of assess the outcome sometimes if all our interventions don't work. So, what we're hoping is, is, you know, as we improve and get our systems more organized and more supportive, and we use the data better at each and every building, that there'll potentially be less and less referrals for services. Like, Karen, Karen and I have worked a lot together on that reading goal. If we nail that reading goal, we're going to, we're going to see our referrals go down for students that potentially might have learning disabilities. I think it'll help. It's not going to eliminate it. I don't think it ever will, but I'm super excited about the programs Karen and I have talked a lot. I mean, that it's really going to help the overall MTSS process. I'm really excited about it. So, those are the, some of the main areas we worked on. We also were fortunate, I think Erin, Erin was largely responsible for this. We are connected now with a specialist at BOSI's Maria La Baritanda. She's our, will be embedded, so to speak, with us next year and come in, and she's already worked with us at the district level. We just met with her a couple, just last week, I think it was, and prior to that, a couple weeks ago, or maybe towards the end of June. And then, we just worked with all the building principals so that we can all get our terminology the same, we can all be on the same page as to what does MTSS mean for the building, the same terminology, and how we're going to move forward together to really make this overall system work for our kids. So, I'll turn it over to Erin. She's going to give you a lot more detail about how our plan has evolved and where we're headed for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. So, as Mr. Armstrong mentioned, we really spent the past year really diving into the needs of the district. So, in addition to the needs assessment, you know, Mr. and Armstrong and I spent a lot of time visiting buildings, visiting MTSS meetings, really trying to understand what we're doing really well, but also help kind of streamline our areas of need. So, that was our focus really over the past year. You know, this summer, we met as a team of directors, as well as building-level administrators, to really kind of create an alignment in our district mission and vision surrounding MTSS. A lot of different ideas out there, all really great, but we needed to come together and create something that was consistent and streamlined for us in a district. So, as we kind of shift to the upcoming school year, we are continuing this alignment through our work with BOSI's. Each building's MTSS team is going to meet to establish a common foundational knowledge and develop our capacity surrounding MTSS here in Lancaster. So, this work is a couple-step process. Maria La Baritanda will come in from BOSI's and meet with each building team twice throughout the school year, as well as work with us here at the district to create a couple of things that are really going to help streamline our processes. One of those things is a streamlined referral process and documentation system. So, this is going to be consistent from our K3 buildings all the way up into the high school. And the reason this is so important is because as a child leaves William Street and heads to the middle school, we want to make sure they can continue those interventions without interruption. And that's exactly what this process will be able to set up for us. In addition, we're going to create a tiered intervention library. So, as Mr. Armstrong talks about MTSS, there's different levels and tiers of support. So, Tier 1 and Tier 2 are really supports that are done in the general education setting, and Tier 3 is more of a pull-out, really small, intensive support that is structured to students' individual skills and needs. So, this intervention library will cover all three tiers, and it will also include progress monitoring tools. It's really important to monitor the progress of the interventions, to see if we need to make changes for students. So, these interventions will not only focus on academic skills, but also support the behavioral and social-emotional needs of all of our students. The library is important because it ensures that the interventions being utilized are evidence-based, but then they're also implemented with fidelity, which is really important, especially when it gets to Mr. Armstrong and I when we're talking about special education referrals. We want to make sure we've done everything we can for students before we move to that next step. So, before I hand it over back to Dr. Kufel, I really want to reiterate that MTSS acts as the foundation of supports for our students, not only in achieving our CDEP goals, but also for our students to really meet their full potential here at Lancaster.
Thank you. You can see the ball, the ball is rolling. We're really excited about the progress that was made this last year, both from where we were pre-pandemic to the work through, and how it's evolved and changed, and the plans in process, and then where we're going to go to really make some strides to support our students and to push them to attain these goals with the proper supports. So, we appreciate your attention. It was a lot to digest here, but I once again appreciate all the members of the committee, colleagues here from the district office in the building, really some fantastic work, but much to be done still. So, thank you.
All right. That was 4.0. Thank you very much. You know, deliveries like this, you know, presentations that really hone in on what we're doing for educating students are really important to me. So, I really appreciate all the work that you've put into making sure all the kiddos get that, that learning and support. All right. Just a couple of things to note. Mrs. Fesher is excused for tonight, and Mr. Jackson took his oath of office at the district office with the clerk. 5.0 is correspondence. We have no correspondence to speak of. 6.0, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion on 6.1, the organizational meeting from July 10th, 2023?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? All right. Moving on to 8.0, board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? And then, 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valli?
Thanks, Mr. Sage. I had four things. I'll scale it down to two, because some of those things were addressed in the CDEP presentation. But first of all, scholar athletes in Lancaster. You know, Lancaster Central School District, and specifically the high school, embodies everything that it is about sports, hard work, dedication, persistence, and excellence. These attributes are cultivated on and off the field of play. So, last week, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, NISPA, announced the 2022-23 Schools of Distinction and Excellence. Not surprisingly, Lancaster High School has been announced as a school of distinction. This means that every varsity team qualified for Scholar Athlete Team Award with a cumulative GPA over 90%. To give this perspective on a state level, there were 84 schools in literally thousands of high schools in all of New York State to accomplish this goal. This is not the first time that we've accomplished this. This is about nine out of 10 years. It's amazing, and I'd like to congratulate all involved, all the parents and students and teachers who are doing the amazing work. A quick word on construction. First, Lancaster High School. Everyone's seen or heard about the new turf field complex behind the high school, including the multi-use turf field, the new outdoor storage building, new parking lots, pavings, the paving of Stendal Drive, new landscaping and sidewalks, including ADA access to fields, seating for multiple field locations, new scoreboards, improved underground drainage, and much, much more there. But there's much, much more going on district-wide. At the high school, work involves replacing all the stage lighting, the rigging, the curtains. Work involves new doors on the stage, hallway lights, ceilings, and controls, painting of the stage walls, installation of interior and exterior security cameras, installation of additional card-reader access points around the building. Work will start on the replacement of windows and exterior doors, doors at the front of the building along Fort and Drive, and the replacement of the high school street sign. Over at Como Park, people are wondering what those boxes are. The construction of new bus loop in front of the elementary school has been completed. Installation of temporary classroom facilities, or the mobile classroom experiences to facilitate major interior renovations. So, in essence, Como Park, again, like I've mentioned many times, will be in mobile classroom experiences and mobile units. So, they're, Como Park completely renovated. Creation of a new art room is planned to be completed in August. The construction has started on major renovations of the B Wing. Much of that is demolished, and the board will take a tour of that. The Como Park also includes the reconstruction of the 16 classroom spaces. All rooms are being rebuilt with new floors, ceilings, lighting, storage, and toilet rooms. Over at Hillview, the classroom addition was funded by the Smart Schools Grant, has been completed. Work also includes major auditorium renovations, including seating, lighting, finishes, theatrical systems, replacement of boilers, increasing the capacity of gas service, replacement of the kitchen freezer, and site improvements, including paving and sidewalks. This is all part of the 2018 Board of Education and Community Approved Capital Project, and we're real proud of the progress that we're making. So, all in all, all told, probably about $12 to $13 million of capital construction this summer, and much more to go in future summers upcoming. Finally, connected to capital construction, Kim Grimal will be communicating an opportunity for parents and members of the community to learn about our tentative plans for the next capital project. So, we have a couple of years left on this capital project, but as always, we plan two years in advance. That opportunity will be to offer suggestions and feedback and a community forum on September 7th at 6:30 at William Street, right here. And so, more to come on that as we conclude our planning and begin communicating the event starting tomorrow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valli. On to 10.0, old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1 is personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.1.2, can I have a motion on the tenure recommendations?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. We will recognize those employees at our next meeting or in September. 11.1.3, can I have a motion to appoint a senior microcomputer technical support specialist?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2 are education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.0 are business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion on policy adoption 7420 sports and athletic program?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.3, can I have a motion on policy adoption 8240 instruction in certain subjects?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.4 is a policy first reading, 3410 Code of Conduct. That's for information only. We'll have another couple of readings and vote on that at the third meeting. 12.5, another policy first reading, 8110 Curriculum Development, Resources, and Evaluation Information. That's for information only as well. 12.6, can I have a motion on child nutrition annual review?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.7, can I have a motion on the food service operating reports for June 2023?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.8, can I have a motion on the food service department wages?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.9, can I have a motion on the contract with WNY Dyslexia Specialists LLC?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the contract with Eric Wedeman, PSY-D?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on the contract with Pediatric Home Nursing Services, Inc., DBA Ivana Healthcare?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.12, can I have a motion on the contract with OG Instruction, Laura D. Leeson?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the contract with Young &amp; Right Architectural?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the surplus boxes?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion on the surplus textbooks?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.17, can I have a motion on the construction change orders?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.18, can I have a motion on the contract with Lawley Benefits Consultants?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.19 is a tax tertiary settlement. That is for information only. 12.20, can I have a motion on the 2022 Twelve point twenty, can I have a motion on the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four tax levy?
Some of them.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Fifteen point oh is our public hearing. We do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening. Sixteen point oh is our adjournment. Before we adjourn, we do have our next regular session, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, that's at seven PM here at the William Street School. And then, as Dr. Valley just mentioned, September seventh at six thirty here at the William Street School, we'll have that community forum. Back to sixteen point oh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, sir.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Thank you all.